I'd like to welcome everyone to the January twenty seventh, two thousand twenty one, regular meeting of the Nishoba Regional School Committee. At this time, I would ask those who so choose to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. We have a live citizens commenter this evening, and Alita will admit. Krista Flingstrom, where did you go? Oh, she is. Krista, good evening. How are you? Welcome.
Hello, ma'am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Everybody here, Krista, okay? Krista, would you please introduce yourself? Well, we know you're Krista, but just a little bit more about yourself and the town that you're a resident of. And then you may go into your, your statement.
Perfect. So I'm Krista Flingstrom. I'm from Stowe, Massachusetts. I live on Harvard Road near the Delaney Wildlife Refuge. I'm a junior or cadet at West Point, which is the commissioning source for the United States Army. I went to Nishoba and I graduated in twenty eighteen, and I was a cadet EMT. And so I was just going to speak about my experience and how important the program was to me, and why I think that Nishoba really supported and helped them get the waiver they need. So I'm speaking in regard to the Cadet EMT Program. This program has been instrumental in my life. I was in the Cadet Program my sophomore year to senior year at Nishoba and served as a crew chief during my senior year. I learned how to react under pressure and help others. Today, I'm a cadet at the United States Military Academy at West Point, or I'm a cadet or a junior. I'll be commissioning as an officer in the United States Army next year. EMT skills are compatible with the life-saving skills needed for the battlefield. An example in my life where Cadet EMT helped me at West Point is when I was the cadet in charge of quarters or on the CCQ desk. Then another cadet came running up to me saying someone had sliced their head open. I had to escort and help the cadet who hurt his head the next level of care. Without EMT, I would not have had the calmness or knowledge to handle the situation accordingly. In my next seven years, I could readily be in a situation where my EMT foundation can change a soldier's life expectancy, whether that be from a tourniquet, application, or an occlusive dressing over a second chest wound. When I read in the paper that the Cadet Program holds little value for the town of Stowe, I was in shock. This program provides immense value to the students who participate in it and the families and communities that these students live in. Just ask any of the Cadet EMTs. Everyone has a story of helping others when they were not on call. Cadet EMTs provide informal medical services to the people they interact with when they're not on call. Also, they provide medical services to their peers when there happens to be a medical emergency at the high school. Their response time is unparalleled. Lastly, the Cadet EMT Program is a unique Nishoba offering. We should protect this job. The Stowe Independent also mentioned, since Cadet EMTs do not work for Stowe, they have little value. However, the reason Cadet EMTs do not work with the Stowe EMS service is because of the structural issue with the Stowe Fire Department. It was mandated that all Stowe EMTs also be firefighters, and they don't accept volunteers. If it was an option to be a volunteer EMT in Stowe, I would have been. All of my EMT peers would have done so too. But because of the town fire and EMS situation, this is not currently an option. It also could be a huge money saver for the town if Cadet EMTs could volunteer as EMTs for Stowe. When I was a cadet, we had to fight to renew the state waiver to continue the program. We won then. I hope that this time the program achieves a more permanent waiver to continue the program indefinitely. As school becomes increasingly out of touch and online, hands-on and real job training decreases. The Cadet EMT Program places students in a real-world learning lab to inculcate leadership and teach them responsibility. I urge community members, students, the superintendent, and the school committee to support this program wholeheartedly. If after this letter, anyone has any questions regarding the program, feel free to reach out to me at krista.flingstrom@westpoint.edu. That's just how my name is spelled. Thank you.
Thank you, Krista. As I said earlier, Krista had emailed me on January eleventh, and I responded, and then she asked if she could make a citizen's comment. But I want to exercise my discretion as the chair and read to you from my response to her. Krista, first of all, I want to acknowledge and express my appreciation for the path of service to our country that you are undertaking. The Nishoba Regional School Committee has been steadfast in its support of the EMT Cadet Program. It is an important part of our high school, and we have tremendous pride in the service it provides to the town of Bolton and the school community. We have even more pride in the accomplishments of our students who have participated in this program, many of whom have pursued careers in various fields of medicine, the military, and other professions that are imbued with a core value of service to one's community and country. Thank you so much for reaching out and making us aware of your concerns, and thank you again for your service to our community and to our country. Thank you so much, Krista. Good luck. Best wishes.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for having me.
Good night.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is Rich Eckel. I wonder if I could make a comment regarding the article in the Stowe Independent that you referred to.
I would, I don't want to allow that at this time. It is not consistent with citizens' comments. I just wanted to, on behalf of the committee, recognize the extraordinary nature of our first participant. So I'm going to decline your request with all respect.
So when would you allow me to speak on this subject? Because it'll seem a little just, if I speak on it, say, in an hour, it won't really seem to match up to the comment that was made.
It's not on the agenda.
You're not recognized, Stephen.
Excuse me, Mr. Rubenstein. You have not been recognized. So our citizens' comments are not a discussion or a Q and A. And so with all due respect, Rich, I want to move on with the agenda. And to be honest, I don't know when the appropriate time would be. However, I do want to move forward. If you want to put something in writing to the committee, then that's certainly within your purview to do that. So without objection, I would like...
Well, I just, I would like to, I would like to suspend the rules then and, or change the rules so that we could have a comment, because there's some misinformation that was put out that this young woman misunderstood, and I'd like to correct the record.
Excuse me, Rich. That is not the purpose of citizens' comments. And I have asked that, with all due respect, that if you have something to share with the committee, that you please do so in writing. And then I said, if, I note your objection, but if there are no further objections, I would like to move to the next item in our agenda, which is the consent agenda.
Well, I'd like to move that we allow me to respond at this time, and I request the committee to make a second.
Again, there is nothing to, on the agenda, that would call for such a motion. And so I...
Well, I suspend the rules. If another member would like to second my motion, I'd love to hear it.
You cannot make a motion. Your motion is out of order because it is not on the agenda. And I, again, if there are no other objections, I've noted your objection. I've stated that you are certainly welcome to put something in writing to the committee. The goal of citizens' comments is to allow citizens to express their opinion, and it is not a discussion or Q and A. My comments were to acknowledge our pride and our support of EMTs and to thank a distinguished alumni for her service to our country and to our community.
So why couldn't I do the same thing? If you're able, if you're able to do that, why can't I do the same thing?
Because I'm the chair, and I control the agenda and the meeting, and I am not going to recognize a motion for something that is not on the agenda. And so...
You don't have to recognize the motion if there's a second. I'm going to let this one...
Excuse me. I believe that it is, the motions are accepted by the chair, and I have denied your motion. I certainly think it's within the purview of the chair, and I will defer to our esteemed expert on Robert's Rules, Mr. Gleason, Attorney Gleason. What say you?
Well, I thank you for that, that very flowery compliment there. I don't think I'm an expert on anything, but in regards to what the chair's prerogative is to whether or not to recognize or not recognize the motion. And from what apparently has transpired here, you have not recognized the motion. So now it would have to go, if Mr. Eckel felt so strongly about this, it would have to go to an appeal. And that's a motion, if he moves to appeal your denial of recognizing the motion, it's a motion you would have to accept.
So be it. I'm not hearing a motion to appeal. So I would like to move on with the agenda. So the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And Elaine, could you have a motion relative to the consent agenda?
Sure. I moved to approve the consent agenda of January twenty seventh, two thousand twenty one, containing the meeting minutes of January thirteenth, two thousand twenty one, and the workshop minutes of January twenty third, two thousand twenty one, and the warrants of January twenty ninth, two thousand twenty one.
Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Leah. All right, I will call the role on the consent agenda. Leah?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes, yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Thank you. Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
Mike? Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Joseph?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Thank you. Brett?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And Kathy? Yes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the chair updates. The only update that I have, and it's more of a reminder, because I believe I mentioned it last week, is to remind folks that on March third, we will have a special school committee meeting to hold the public hearing on the budget. And we will be sending out information to the public in terms of participation as we get closer to that date. Mary McCarthy, who reads the fine print, reminded me that we had scheduled a a training session with MAS D for superintendent's evaluation. So I have notified Dorothy Presser that we cannot have it on the third, as we originally planned, and I'm waiting for her to get back to me about whether or not we can hold it on our second meeting in March. So, yes, Mary.
I would like to give, do credit to Amy Cohen, who was the first person who noticed that, and then I looked it up. So I really seconded what Amy brought up.
Great effort, team, because I am so out to lunch on that, because I thought I looked at the calendar to make sure it was free, and obviously I mentioned it. So, so good catch. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Sure, thanks. And I've got my notes here, so if you see me going back and forth, that's what it is. So the first is just with regards to the mascot, the search for the mascot continues. It's on track. NRHS received the first iteration of potential drawings this week, so they'll begin the process of the review and further discussions in upcoming weeks. So more to come on that, but just to let you know that it's ongoing. The NRHS principal search update, actually, we'll wait for Anne Marie. Anne Marie is in the middle of interviews right now, and she's going to pop in when she has a free second and update you. But I believe that they are going to try to finish up the first round of interviews tonight, and so that's where she's at. I know that they had several yesterday, so we'll see what she brings us here when she comes in into our meeting. The third item, considerations for full return to school. It was interesting, we had a commissioner meeting today, and so, of course, I prepared this before I know what's coming through those kinds of meetings as we lead up to our school committee meetings. I'm going to kind of intersperse some things, and Dr. McGuire, if I'm missing anything, let me just fill in, please. So the potential to full return, I just want to put it out there that it continues to be at the forefront of our thinking all the time. None of us really want to be in the hybrid or full remote model. We're always waiting for that opportunity to be able to bring in more students or look at a full return. With that in mind, I put a note here, I said, "We are still too early in the vaccination rollout process to be able to map out anything concrete regarding its implications to the arena of K to twelve public education." And that, that very line there was just reaffirmed today in our meeting with the commissioner. From what we can tell, it seems that Massachusetts didn't get nearly the vaccines that it had hoped it was going to get. And so there's a much slower rollout than I think anybody had wanted. And so there's certainly some, some issues, multitude of issues, that folks are working really hard to deal with and try to keep it as on track as it can be. But without a doubt, we need for that vaccination process to be further along than it is right now before we can earnestly think about full return. We continue to be on track right now to move to a hybrid model at the high school for March first. There are additional mitigating factors, and I'm going to kind of read through this, but then I want to kind of also spring from this and just mention some of the things that the commissioner mentioned today. There are additional mitigating factors that remain at play for school districts, for a school district like ours to move to in its entirety to full return. Certain CDC and DESE guidelines will have to change dramatically, such as those affecting general and special education busing guidelines, those affecting the serving of lunches, et cetera. Changes will need to be negotiated with the unions, and then there will have to be a collective agreement through consensus in our three communities that three foot of social distance is acceptable versus the current six-foot demarcation that we, that we currently have. As we learn more about the vaccination process and the DESE guidelines are altered, we will survey families as we look forward to some type of potential fuller return. Now, to just kind of spring from what I'd written previously to kind of put it in context with today's meeting, it's our understanding that they are drafting new guidelines for us, particularly in the areas, for example, of busing and that kind of thing. But openly admit that until, just as I said in my, you know, my first paragraph there, until we see that vaccine rollout get further along, no one is prepared to make any move right now. They said that they are working day and night on recrafting guidelines. We don't know what that looks like right now, and probably won't. I'd expect for several weeks yet, but it was encouraging to hear that they are looking at doing that and that they are, that the DESE is currently working on that. The notion of the negotiations and MOUs also came up today with the commissioner's conversation, particularly just with the notion of acknowledging that we will all have to go back to the drawing board with our MOUs again before we can, we can make any further movement in this area. And then, of course, the notion of, you know, our three communities all coming to consensus and agreeing that the three-foot distance is acceptable to everyone. And that's something that I'm seeing too, is going around on the superintendent listservs right now, as people are trying to get a sense of what their communities are comfortable with. So it was interesting, because everything that I had written in this particular section about considerations for full return actually came up today at some juncture or another. So I think it's, it's exciting to know that we may be on the cusp of some change, so I'm excited about that. But I'm also seasoned enough to not get my hopes up too high just yet, but looking optimistically at the future. So I think once we see the vaccine rollout go a little bit further, I think everybody's going to feel a lot better. And the COVID update really is just to say that we are just continuing, as we have been all along, to track all the COVID cases that we are aware of within the school district and conduct appropriate contact tracing. I will say that our contact tracing is, is down, I think substantially, and I think in large part is because people are keeping their children home when they feel sick. And that's, that's very helpful, because contact tracing is so much work for nursing staff. And I think our nursing staff is, they're just our unsung heroes right now. We're closely monitoring the vaccination rollout progress and have offered any type of support we can give to the Nishoba Boers of Health. And I would say that that also came up today in the commissioner's call too, because I think a lot of us are doing what we're doing, saying, "How can we help? How can we help? Can we, can we set up a center? What can we do here?" So I would want our communities to know that we're right at the front of the line, saying, "Let us help. What can we do here to help move this along?" So that's kind of my portion of the update. And Dr. McGuire, did I miss anything in that? Did I capture everything? Yeah, okay. Do you want to, just do your teaching and learning update, and then we'll open up for questions?
Sure. So just as a follow-up, March fifth is right around the corner. We had the great opportunity to meet with Mark Brackett's team last week. He'll be our keynote speaker, as he's the director of the Yale Institute for Social Emotional Intelligence. He's going to deliver our keynote on the fifth in the morning and also offer a workshop in the afternoon. He's also sending, they're also sending over some signed copies of his, of his book that we're going to be able to raffle off and give to folks in our, in our complete virtual, virtual PD day. And what I've also done here is provided you a link to the flyer. Our theme for this year is "Nishoba Fosters Belonging," which is super appropriate. And what I've also done is created a link and provided a list of all of the workshops that we'll be offering on the fifth. So a variety of workshops, and speaking with Dr. Brackett's team, you know, he's very, very seasoned in delivering these virtual institutes now, given the situation that we're in, and is also willing to tailor things as well to the emotional learning component for different districts. So really looking forward to the fifth and all that we're going to be offering on that day, even though we're a little bit constrained being in a, in a virtual environment. So please take a look. And then the latest update of the download should be out by the end of this week from the Teaching and Learning Department. So we'll forward that right along once it's complete.
Thank you. Anyone who has questions for Todd or Brooke, please raise your hand, and I will recognize you. So I have Amy, and then Mike. I have a question as well. So Amy, why don't you start?
Thank you. I wanted to thank Superintendent Clancy for including an update on the considerations for full return to school, because I think many parents have been holding out hope that, you know, there'd be a chance to get their kids back in school come the spring. And, you know, your update highlights that there are some real obstacles that still stand in the way of, of making that happen. So of the, of the things that you brought up, I was wondering if you, you mentioned that there's going to be new guidance coming out. Did they talk about when? Like, is that, do you expect that before the end of this school year?
Yes. I do expect it before the end of this school year. Again, I'll turn to Dr. McGuire if I'm saying something that you understood differently. I'd like you to mention it, but my understanding is that, in part, it's really going to depend on the vaccine rollout and how that goes. But I, but I sense that if they can do it within this school year, they are hoping to. Would that be your takeaway as well, Dr. McGuire? Yeah.
Do you have any sense of whether those guidelines would allow for phased return to school based on age groups, like prioritizing younger learners or...
There was no discussion on that level at all. I would tell you, we have those kinds of internal discussions all the time, as, you know, the administrative team within Nishoba. You know, we've looked especially at trying to get our younger students in. I worry so much about, I mean, I worry different grade levels right across the board, but I do worry about our youngest learning to read. That, to me, is almost a number one priority, and trying to get that age group back in. And our principals have been meeting regularly, trying to map out something, some way. But again, it's so hard with some of these guidelines in place to make it happen. If we could, we would. I mean, it's just really that simple. So, no, I, I'm hoping that those guidelines come, come inside of the next couple of weeks, the next couple of months. But there was absolutely no timeframe given on that at all today.
Okay, and I just have one last question, if that's okay, Kathy, and I'm happy to wait to give somebody else a turn and you can come back to me.
No, Mike Horish is probably one of the most patient people I've ever met, so you take your, ask your question.
Thank you. My last question is, is there any plan to form a task force or a work group, working group focused on, you know, applying the lessons that we've learned from this year towards making sure we have a full return in place for the fall? When, when does that process start?
So that's a great question. I think you're asking a couple of different questions in there. First of all, I think our task forces that we've got in play, we would want to continue to try to keep that level of continuity going wherever it makes sense to. And I think that our various groups would, I think, would welcome that. You know, I think that we have great folks to work with, and they have that, that through line, and so I think that that's really important. So that's one part of the question. I think the other part of the question, though, is really, you're not really asking me this, but I think you kind of are asking me this, and if I'm misreading, please correct me. But there's a question out there, maybe just, you know, a question even I ask myself, like, are we going to be at full return in September? Right? Because honestly, I don't think anybody, I guess maybe there are other people that want everybody back, but superintendents, I guarantee, we want everybody back to full return as soon as we possibly can, for a million reasons, you know? And nobody feels good about any of this. Like, no, like, there's nothing good about this. So I think that we're, we're all wanting that. With that said, though, Amy, I think it would be foolhardy for me to say that I think, or guarantee, or can assure that we will all be back in full return in September. And that was certainly the sense that I got today too, from the state meeting that we attended today. With that said, though, I don't think it's like an eighty, twenty percent or something like that. I think if this rollout goes really quickly and that we're able to do things, that they can change those guidelines quickly, then I can, I think, I think there's hope. I think there's hope for us doing some major things still in this year. If that doesn't... If that doesn't happen and it's completely out of our control, then, then it, it won't, it won't happen as quickly as we'd like it to. So the answer in short, there's no guarantee right now. There's no, no timeline. There's no aspirational. This is what we'd like to do, other than we all want to do full return in September. That's how I'm budgeting. And I said that to this group before, that's how I'm budgeting is planning for full return.
I'll send it. Also. Mike?
Yeah, thank you. I want to echo what Amy said. Really appreciate superintendent bringing up this topic, even if it's something that we're not prepared to consider today. At some tomorrow, we're going to be considering it. And at some tomorrow, we will have to prepare for it. So I think it's, I think it was really important that we, we bring this up at this point and we continue to bring it up. So one of the things, I, I just have two questions. My first question is with regards to the survey that was mentioned. I think polling families about what their preferences are at this point, and I think rather relatively consistently moving forward for either status quo or shifting to a full return. I, is probably going to help us to be responsive to the communicate, to community. In basically acknowledging what they know to be best for their kids. And I think, again, this is an appropriate measure for a phased in return, you know, starting with our most dependent learners. And so knowing that guidelines, and I mean guidelines as opposed to regulations which require compliance, will be presented by D E C I. And, you know, your mention of some of the things that we would need to acquire consensus from the community. I would, I was wondering if asking these sorts of questions, the three to six foot guidance, the busing, if that's something that can be supported by the community, if that's something that we can tap into in our next survey. Because, you know, oftentimes the answers to these obstacles can be found within the experiences of our own communities. So I guess my question is, when can that survey be expected to be rolled out and can we include those sorts of questions?
So I think some of the questions, yes, you're right. And, you know, even as our elementary principals have been meeting and, and and looking at the possibility of trying to break back some of our youngest learners. You know, we did receive, this kind of goes to your, your question. We did receive some notes from parents saying, listen, I'm prepared to drive my own child if that helps. Like, don't hesitate to ask. And I'm thinking, well, we may well be going to that stage because we can't do it with a bus guidance, the way that it is. You know, and, and the last thing, and Mike, you're, you're right in terms of compliance or guidance. So the, the distinction. But I would also put out though, that I can almost guarantee that if we say, well, I know this is D E S E guidance, but for busing, but we're not going to pay any attention to it. Pretty sure I'm going to get a phone call. I get phone calls now. If, if I, you know, like, so I'm, I'm not, not even thinking that we, we won't get phone calls from either parents and or state officials.
Yeah.
So I think we want to be like everything else we do, thoughtful, planful, strategic in what we're doing. And, you know, we, we've talked about what type of, what, what a phase in look like, you know? We've had lots of those discussions, but we still have these other key things here that are still critical, that have to be overcome before we can do anything. So, you know, I think the comment was made today at the state meeting that this might not be as smooth a return as we would all like. And so I think we have to be ready for that. I think we have to kind of guard ourselves and be ready for that. But we're up to the challenge.
Certainly. So sorry if I missed it. Was there, did, did you mention like some timeframe for the expectation of that? An upcoming survey?
No, we didn't. We, we did not mention a timeframe. And to be honest with you, we really were waiting to see what happened to, after today's meeting. So I think we have to go back now and, and take a look at what came out of today's meeting and now be mindful around that information.
Okay.
But I'm not looking at five months from now.
Right. So is it okay if I ask my second question?
Yep.
Okay. So you actually answered the second question, which is really about clarifying and establishing a distinction between guidelines and regulations. Regulations, we are required to be in compliance. Guidelines to some extent is open to us, right? When you say we have to, in the end, we have to decide what is best for our communities. And I think that goes back to my question about serving our communities to know what would be considered best. So I guess, I guess as a, as a follow-up, I think, you know, as I think about this, whether it's something that will could happen in the spring or something that could happen in the fall. I think regardless, there, it, at, at some point, there is going to be a return and not everybody is going to be ready for that. Not everybody's going to be ready when the district is ready or when others are ready. So I think I, I, it's, it's important to, I think, acknowledge that. But, but also that I guess in my eyes and from my lens, I see the full return as a full return option with a, I mean, I know, again, I know it's early, but a full return option with a remote component potentially for people who are simply not ready. Is that something that has sort of percolated in your head?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Brooke, in your considerations for full return to school, the last little section there, as we learn more about the vaccination process and the E S E guidelines are altered, we will survey families as we look toward more potential in building return for students. I know that Mike mentioned, you know, the, the possibility, but is what you and your team were thinking about in terms of a survey like that consistent with what Mike was saying? Or did you have something in addition?
No, actually, pretty much what Mike was saying is where our thinking was going. So I think that his, his thinking pretty much parallels what our team's thinking is right now too. But the of why, I want to be really, really clear on this though. There have been no decisions made. There has been no pathway established. And until some of this changes, I'm not prepared to veer away from it. And, you know, the, I would also agree with Mike. I don't think that all of our parents are going to be prepared for a three foot distance. I think things like that. There are going to be parents that are going to want to keep their, their children at home. But then, but then comes the question. So is it a return to remote learning? Or does it become homeschooling? I think there are still a lot of philosophical discussions that are going to happen between now and September that we haven't even thought of, that we continue to work through. Every one of these pieces has multiple layers to it.
Thank you. Amy, is your hand up?
Yeah, I, I just have one more question if no other committee members have.
Anyone else have a question? Okay, Amy.
Thank you. I, I was just wondering, Brooke, you say that for item C, under the considerations for full return to school, you say there will have to be a collective agreement through consensus in our three communities. That three feet of social distance is acceptable versus the current six foot demarcation. How do you envision getting to a consensus in all three towns?
Well, I think that that comes back to the survey piece that Mike Horace was talking about earlier. And I think that that's one of those places. And I, what, what where my headspace was going when I wrote that piece is, for example, it wouldn't do us any good if all of Bolton, let's say eighty percent of Bolton said, we're accepting of the three foot distance, but that same percentage said in Lancaster, yeah, we're not. Because we're a regional school district. And so somewhere we are going to have to find, and I think that that kind of gets back to the there might be glitchy full return here as we find our way to that because we have three communities that, that all think a little bit differently. You know, and so that's really, that's an example of what I was thinking. Not the only example, but that's one of the examples I was thinking of there. Not everyone's going to agree with the three foot mark. And that very topic I saw floating today on the superintendent's listserv across the state because people are struggling with this.
Thank you. Also, Amy. Okay. Thank you, Brooke, and thank you, Todd. The next item on the agenda, there's no unfinished business, which is, means we're caught up, I guess. I don't know. But new business.
Point of order, Madam Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Leah.
I'm so sorry. I should have raised my hand earlier. Todd, I just wanted to let you know that the hyperlink of the workshops requires a login, which if you want it to stay that way, it's totally fine. But if you wanted to let people access it, I think some permission needs to be changed.
I just need to change it to full unrestricted. So those without a specific email address can, and I can do that immediately.
No worries.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Leah. Okay. Um, new business?
Madam Chair, I'm, I'm sorry to bother you. I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to let you know, you're, you're a little ahead of the schedule here on the agenda. And the the, the, the CPAC co-chair is inquiring whether or not she is invited to participate in this portion of the agenda.
Always invited. I thought she wanted me to read, but I would much prefer to have.
No, it's, it's, it's your, it's your call. So she's, she's waiting on me to tell her whether or not she should come in or not. So if you tell me she should be here, I will tell her. If you exercise your discretion as a chair that way, she's not needed, I will tell her that as well. So.
My preference is to have someone other than me do the update. And I will, as you go and so you guys are going to share the thing there? Is that okay? Or is she going to come in on her own device?
She's going to come in on her own device. She's in the other office. So I'll just, I'll scream over and let her know that.
Okay, so Alita, you can, you can let her in, but I want to tee it up by saying that I think for the past three years, I've been the liaison to the CPAC, the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee. And I am very impressed with the work that the group does and the support they provide in the, in so many areas, but in terms of training and a, a number of things. There's Charlene. Hi, Charlene. And I, I had asked if they could do a brief update, maybe toward the end of the year, if they did a presentation about the work that they do. But I'm happy to introduce Charlene Cabral, who is one of the CPAC co-chairs along with Kate Giannetti. So Charlene, go right ahead. Welcome.
Oh, do you want me to read the little presentation? I thought you were going to do it and I was just here for questions.
But no, you, you read it. And then we'll ask questions. Do you have it?
Give me one second. I'll grab it.
We didn't rehearse this very well. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I thought I was just here for questions. Okay.
That's okay.
Oh, boy. Because it's actually on the device that, that I'm using. So.
Do you want me to read it? Because I've got it right here.
Yeah, sure. If you could read it.
And you're here for questions, which is great. Okay.
Wonderful. Thank you.
CPAC serves as an advisor to the school committee regarding special education and safety of students with disabilities. The Nishoba CPAC is open to all parents of the district. You do not have to have a child with an I E P or a five oh four plan to be part of our committee. We understand that many chose to keep their child's I E P or five oh four status undisclosed. And in this way, parents can participate without implicitly disclosing whether or not their child has a disability, an I E P or five oh four plan. Two years ago, a small group of parents participated in a CPAC building event with the Federation for Children with Special Needs. Our Nishoba parents came to the conclusion that in order to build a better CPAC, we needed more than meetings and presentations. We needed to get to know each other, socialize and maybe even relax. We were on a roll with meetings, presentations and socials when COVID hit. We had to change gears to work with the administration on building remote learning for all students. The amount of parent feedback was fabulous and just about every request made was implemented. This year, we want to get back to building our base. So we are having two online events every month. The second Tuesday of the month at seven will be either a presentation meeting, election or combination thereof. The third Tuesday of the month at seven will be a social online meeting. Kathy Turilli has sent the links out to all CPAC parents, but if anyone is interested in attending and they don't have the link, please check out the Facebook page, Nishoba CPAC, N R S D official. Officers will make sure the info is updated on the N R S D website. The next meeting is February 9th and we will be having a business meeting as well as elections. If anyone is interested in running for a position or becoming more involved, I urge you to attend. There may also be a presentation that night. CPAC chairs are still working out the details. All members will be emailed an agenda prior to the meeting in accordance with open meeting laws. On behalf of myself as CPAC liaison, CPAC co-chairs Charlene Cabral and Kate Giannetti and our CPAC officers and members, thank you for your attention and hope for your future participation with N R S D CPAC. So, um, any questions for Charlene? So Charlene, I think it would be great if you could share with the committee some examples of the, the speakers and the workshops that you have. I know that there are some that you hold annually, but then there are some of interest as your membership has indicated. But as you said, that it's not just for parents of students with children on I E Ps or five oh four plans, but it's open to all parents in the community. So if you could give us some examples.
Sure. So in the past, we do usually have, you know, our usual business meetings, which pertain more to the special education aspect and socials that are open to all parents. But as far as presentations, we had a great presentation before COVID hit where people could actually go in person. And that was an executive functioning presentation. We had over forty parents attend. And I know that executive functioning is an area that a lot of parents are interested in. And I think now that some parents are home and watching their kids at work, so to speak, because of hybrid learning and remote learning, they may even be more interested in executive functioning because they might, you know, see that their children are in need of that skill, or I should, I should say, skill set. The nice thing about COVID is that not only do we have our presentations, but we can also let you know about other presentations that may be available online. And there is a presentation in February available online that is by Sarah Ward. She's a really leading ex-executive functioning expert. And she's local. And she's expensive. And this is a free presentation. So if anybody's interested, hop on our CPAC official page and you'll see a link. And there's also a parent discussion page, which is an unofficial CPAC page. And I believe the link is there as well. So I'm mentioning this program. It's not an official CPAC program for us this year, but like I said, she is very expensive to book. And this is a great opportunity to, to be able to watch her. We had Mary Minnick from our district give us a presentation last year, and that was also great. I don't want to diminish Mary. But we've, we've had that presentation opportunity already. So this is something new. Also, we've done our basic rights presentation, which is for, really geared toward parents who have a child with an I E P or a five oh four plan, and they need to understand the rules and rights and responsibilities that go along with that. And we always plan to do transition meetings, transition presentations. And we will also offer presentations if we see that parents are interested in a particular subject. So don't be shy. If you are interested in a particular subject, in a particular social, in something like that, now please get in touch with me or Kate and, and let us know. And we'll be happy to set something up.
Thank you. Other que, oh, Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, Ms. Ms. Cabral, thank you for your, for your volunteerism and really for serving as sort of a, one of the tiers of advocacy for kids. I guess I just have a quick question. If parents listening right now were interested in contacting you or finding that CPAC page, where would they look? And I'm wondering if as a part of our materials. where would they look? And I'm wondering if as a part of our materials, Kathy, if, or, or maybe as part of minutes, we could kind of issue that so that it was somewhere associated with this meeting?
Sure. It, it should be on the NRSD website under CPAC. It's also the, if you look on Facebook and you look for Nishoba CPAC NRSD official, if you put those words in, we should also pop up. And there is also a parent page, which is not officially associated with CPAC, but many of the same people are involved. Um, so also Kathy Turilli will send out any information to parents who do have a child with an IEP or a 504. But if there are parents who don't and they want to participate, they can hop onto the NRSD website and get that information. And, you know, that, that should do it.
That's perfect. Thank you.
So Mike, um, excuse me. I can put the statement on with our meeting materials, and I can embed the link in the statement, and so that's there. But one of the, the things that CPAC has done over the few, the last few years is to make sure that whether it's the district website or the school-based website, that, that parents have easy access to that link and all the information that, that goes with it. Um, and I think it was maybe, I guess, three years ago that CPAC conducted a, a survey of, of parents whose children are on IEPs or 504 plans. And they got a lot of good feedback relative to the workshops that people would like, but also suggestions on how to improve communication. So they, if you, if your, if your child isn't in, you know, one of the categories that I mentioned, you might not be aware of what the CPAC does, but they do a lot of good work and very appreciative of the time that Charlene and Katie
And others.
contribute to working on this, and also Joan's guidance for them. So thank you. Brooke?
I just want to say to all, I quote what Mike has said, and Kathy, Charlene, I am so appreciative of the positive energy that you and Katie have brought forward and your efforts with Joan DeAngelis. And I just, it's just been so amazing to watch, and I can't thank you enough for all the hard work that you all do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Charlene? Mr. Gleason?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I would just like to request of Attorney Cabral, if she would be so kind as to sort of emphasize for those who are listening, the importance of CPAC from a statutory standpoint.
Well, CPAC is mandated. It's a mandated committee council or advisory group of parents. So the state wants the, this group of parents to be able to work with the administration so that if there are any issues concerning special education in the school district, that those issues be addressed. Now, I will tell you from a perspective of being a co-chair and also an attorney and working with the Federation for Children with Special Needs, one lone complaint or concern is not going to make any issue. How do I put this? What CPAC does is CPAC looks for trends. So if there are several people saying, hey, at such and such school, we are missing this golden nugget of either occupational therapy or, you know, something, something that the children with special needs need, and we are not getting it. We're not getting this service because routinely at this school, it's kind of like they've dropped the ball here. Then we can bring that back to Joan and say, hey, I think, you know, parents are concerned that this may be missing here. So we have not been hearing those kinds of trends. So that's, I guess, a good thing. But sometimes parents have an issue with their particular child's IEP or 504, and they'll call, usually it's me, and we'll discuss the matter. And, you know, we'll, we'll find out what are some things that the district can do to help, you know? If the parent wants me to discuss it with an administrator, I will. If not, if they want me to just give them some ideas on my own, I'll, I'm happy to do that as well. So CPAC will help the parents on a one-on-one basis. But our official role is to be basically looking for trends of things where we can improve special education or, you know, the lives of parents working with their children.
Thank you. Other questions for Charlene? Charlene, I want to thank you for joining us tonight. I'm glad that worked out. And again, thank you for the work that, that you and Katie are doing on behalf of, of the CPAC.
Thank you for having us. Bye.
Yay. You're free to go.
I'm gonna leave.
All right. Thank you. Um, the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's goals, and that is an action required item. And I am going to turn this part of the agenda over to Dr. McCarthy.
Okay, thank you. So at our last meeting, which was January 11th, the Personnel Subcommittee, that is Kathy Codyen and I, met with Brooke as we have been since last October, and working on, with Brooke, on the superintendent's goals, which the Subcommittee voted to accept and to recommend that the whole committee would, would accept the superintendent's annual plan. Now, just to give a little tiny bit of background, you remember, I'm sure vividly, the presentation that we did on superintendent goals back in October, and the fact that DESE suggests the superintendents have four to six goals. Two of those goals are district improvement goals, and that is separate from the district improvement plan. At least one professional practice goal and one student learning goal. And when we first started to work with Brooke, she actually had, I would say, nine, nine goals, I would think, if we. And so part of our work together was to try to advise and to help Brooke to, to hone these down. So we, at this point, there are six goals, two district improvement, three professional practice, and one student learning goal. What, and there is one student learning goal, which is on social studies and civics, which fit really naturally in terms of the district improvement plan under curriculum instruction. So that's where that has gone, but it doesn't take away from the importance of that. What we tried to do was to help to make sure that these, these goals were smart goals. And Kathy and I looked at them from the perspective of school committee and evaluating our superintendent and her performance. And so with all the rest of what Superintendent Clutchy was doing, what Brooke was doing, with all the rest of it, she was able to, to get these down to the format that you see. And so with that, I would give it back to Kathy, because I think at this point, rather than make a motion, I think that, that, right, Brooke will talk about the goals, and then I would make that, and then I'll make the motion.
Sure. And I, I won't read everything to you, because you can all read. Sometimes you've, you've got these goals several weeks ago, so just some broad stroke overviews on, on each one. The first one really is that continuation of supporting NRHS right now, support a positive climate in the building, equitable learning environment and structures. We had started, you'll recall, a couple of years ago, we had started work with John Dorian, that was kind of brought to an abrupt halt. But we had suggested that it was always in the back of our mind that we wanted to bring him back into the fray. And in discussion with him, it seemed that once we got a new principal on board, it would make sense that he, that we bring John Dorian back to the, back into the fold and start to continue the work that they had initially started. So very excited about that. You know, the, the whole notion, and I think this kind of came up earlier in a question or in the superintendent's report too, of looking at best practices of what we've learned through all of this hybrid and remote time. Because I think that, I think that you'll see, and I'm excited about this, but I think that you'll see teaching will take on almost a bit of a different look, because I think that teachers and administrators have learned so much through this time period, that I think you'll see a lot of work that we've done during this time period start to interweave our work as we move forward. And, and I think that's very exciting. And of course, you know, we're, we continue to work away at the, the hiring of the, the principal. And I just want to give a shout out to everybody who is on the search committee, because it's a fairly substantial search committee, and I know that they are doing interviews even still right now. So I'm very appreciative of all the work that they've done to get, to get us this far. The second district goal really is working with MSBA. And I think that Alita said to me the other day quite flippantly, but quite truthfully, she said. And Alita, I apologize for bringing this up, but she says, sometimes it feels like this MSBA work is like another full-time job. I would have to agree with her. There are times, like when we're done tonight, I will continue to go back on and to continue to work with the, the document that's due tomorrow night at midnight. You know, we, we met with MSBA today, and as I know that both Amy and Leah knew. But then we met after, Pat Maroney and I met after with two of our representatives to make sure that we were doing the document the way that, that would best serve Nishoba Regional School District and Nishoba Regional High School. And we had a couple of ideas through that meeting that we said, you know what, we're going to go back after and do some additional work on this. And so we reached out to Rob Freeswick right away, and Pat went back in and started doing some additional work. I went in and started doing additional work. So, you know, there, there's always, always work to do on the MSBA project as we get closer to the feasibility study module. And I think from my perspective at today's meeting, for example, I, I don't know that maybe Leah or Amy, I don't know that you would have picked up on this, but from my lens, it just felt so good, because I thought we are getting so close to that feasibility component. We're not, it's not quite there yet, but you can almost taste it. So it felt very, very comforting to me that I thought, yes, we have taken all of these steps, and, and we're just about ready to go to into this really big one that is going to really drive the work moving forward. The other efforts with MSBA is the, the educational profile, which we've done countless, countless hours worth of work on that particular document and still continued. It's, it's pretty much a living, breathing document that we're working on. And you'll see us, we did submit, submit it in part in November, but you'll see us continue to do work on that, because that will also have to drive the feasibility study. I know that the MSBA Building Committee Group, that's our NRSD group, met the other day, and Jake Foster attended that meeting, and we've invited him to come and join us in February with the school committee to give us an update from his perspective, his perspective. Now, keep in mind that the work that he's doing is really specific just to educational programming. So it's not wide open. That's really, that's really my role. His, his role is just really going down that more tangential line of the educational programming component. The Building Committee I've alluded to already, we did a lot of work to pull that group together. I feel really good about the group that's there. We continue to work to meet MSBA timelines, and as I say, our next document is due for tomorrow night. And that's the, the maintenance plan. The enrollment matrix has been submitted. So MSBA continues to interweave my work almost daily. The next goal is professional practice and the, the communication component. And we, I think that we've done a lot of additional work in this area, particularly through the COVID component of our efforts right now, as we've, you know, as March 13th happened and evolved, and time has evolved thereafter. I think we've done a lot of really good work on that. We've worked really hard to make sure that our community is always in the, in the loop and feels well communicated with. So that continues. You'll see the ones, the ones per year for each community Zoom meeting that, that will be coming up on the horizon the next, next couple of months. The COVID memos are ongoing. You know that we've gone to once a week now, memos, and that, they continue. The MSBA memos will be preparing one to probably go out in, in mid-March and update everybody on where things are at, at that point in time. The annual meetings with the, I attend annually meeting with our school councils, and we'll continue to do that. I always, I really enjoy those meetings. And the communication, of course, with the town administrators is ongoing. The professional practice goal, of course, is the, the onboarding, not just the hiring, but the hiring and the onboarding of the NRHS principal. Because it's not as easy as once you do the hire, it, it, it just kind of stops, and that person just moves in, and they just pick up where somebody else left off. It, it doesn't work like that. There are, there's a lot of work that goes into the onboarding. And so I think that you'll see that there, there'll be an awful lot of effort put into, to that component. Whoever comes in is coming into an amazing administrative team. So I feel very, very good that they will be embraced and supported as we support Steve right now and Janine, John, and Matt in terms of that second layer are so strong at that high school right now. It's just an amazing tier of administration that will support this new individual coming on, as well, of course, as the work that I do, the work that Tom does, and our, our various teams. So that's, that will be ongoing work as we work through that whole process. The mascot is something that I bring up just about every single meeting to kind of keep you apprised of where that's going. Though there are regular ongoing meetings with her strategy. Certainly, Tommy Rich and Steve Colney have been very, very actively involved with this. They bring me into, not all the meetings, but I certainly do attend a fair number of them, offer input, strategies, insight, perspectives, just general feedback. So that work continues. The, the next one, of course, the integration of social emotional practices. And, and of course, you know, for, for us, you see this as something that happens ongoing throughout the district. And, you know, I'm so excited about the, the theme of Nishoba Foster's Belonging and bringing Mark Brackett to the table. I see Dr. McGuire, I don't know if you saw this, but did you see that he's the keynote speaker for our MESS conference? And I thought, oh my gosh, we've got the keynote speaker who's presenting to all of the superintendents that's going to be coming to March 5th. And that was a coup, and I think Todd deserves a lot of credit for that one, because he, he, he made more than one or two phone calls on that one. So I think that, you know, the, not just that, but I think all of the other PD activities on that March 5th, you know, we've got over 30 that are happening. It's exciting work that's happening. We continue, of course, to follow the DESE guidelines, regulations with regarding, with regards to all SEL strategies. And we continue to monitor any changes and then do whatever, make whatever tweaks and refinements we need to do do within the district. And lastly, provide increased opportunities for students to seek support in grades nine to 12. And that, you know, I, I was so excited about our student support center. That is being used regularly at high school right now, which is terrific. That's what we were hoping for, and we're seeing that that's exactly what's happening. So, you know, I know that these are being presented right now, but the truth is, this is the work that, exactly as Mary had said, I had nine calls at the beginning, and truthfully, in some ways, I feel like the nine girls are just kind of all smooshed now into this, because this is the work that we're doing this year, and it's exciting work. In spite of COVID, in spite of all of this, we still continue to do this really good work, and it's, it's exciting work. So I don't know if anyone has any questions, but happy to entertain any questions.
If you have questions, would you raise your hand, and then I will recognize you. So I see Leah and Amy. Um.
Elaine?
Okay, so Leah.
So not so much a question, unless something pops into my head later. But just a reminder that these, this is a two-year goal cycle, right? So we will see you working on all of these things, not only this year, but next year. And so at the end of this year, we'll see the school committee providing some formative feedback. And then, because the only one that I've been through, it was a one-year cycle. And so at the end of this year, we give formative feedback, right? And then we evaluate summatively at the end of next year.
At the end of next year, that's correct.
Okay.
Elsa? Okay, Amy.
Yeah, I want to thank the Personnel Committee for spending so much time developing these goals with Brooke. And I think it's, I think this has been on the agenda before, but this is the I think this has been on the agenda before, but this is the first time we've been presented with them. So I, the only comment I have is that related to district goal number one, where it says identifying the best practices for teaching and learning from the experiences of hybrid and remote learning. Such an important piece of of, I know that the work that you're going to be doing, and I guess my only comment would be to include language that incorporates canvassing parents and students as well as teachers. Because I didn't see any mention of those stakeholders on these goals. And I think, I know you're planning on reaching out to them and capturing their experiences and their backs, their opinions of best practices. I just wonder if we could somehow formalize that in the goals.
I think that this has been such an incredible time period to navigate for all of us. I think that if we don't take the opportunity to stand back and reflect and learn and capture what has worked well, what hasn't, and do some some self-reflection. And I don't mean personal, like as a district self-reflection. I think we'd be missing an incredible opportunity. It would be just such a lost opportunity.
So does that mean that you would be open to including such language in the goals, Brooke?
Well, it doesn't make any difference whether it's in the goals or not. Amy is exactly right. We wouldn't be doing this just in isolation, just with teachers only. The the truth is, we're looking at this particular goal as part of the climate within the staff. I mean, that's really what the school is centered on, but I think that our efforts should be broader than that because I think that there are, it will be a lost opportunity if we don't capture it in the next couple of months.
Elsa, Amy.
I guess so. I'm just wondering if anybody else on the committee feels that there should be language added, but if if the, you know, I'm happy to go with the will of the committee. Is that how it's said?
Amy asked a question. Mike, did you have your hand up to respond?
Yeah, I mean, I I guess I'm listening to what Amy's saying and I'm listening to what Brooke is saying and it sounds like the phrasing is kind of the same. I think the question is, can we formally codify that in the goals? So that it doesn't just include teachers, so that it includes all stakeholders, as Amy said. I mean, it it sounds, it's from from the superintendent's response, it sounds like we're that's sort of what we're going to be doing anyways. So I guess I guess the question is, can we actually implement that and include those in the goals formally so that it's 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 inclusive rather than exclusive, I guess? Unless, Amy, I don't want to put words in your mouth. That's just how I'm interpreting things.
I think that I I would turn to the Personnel Subcommittee. I mean, I'm I'm always open to changing goals, to be honest with you, because it's part of a an evolution of work that you're constantly doing. So I mean, I'm fine to add something to that extent.
Okay, and Brooke, would you work with Mary to make those inclusions?
Yep, happy to do that.
Thank you. Elaine, and then I saw Rich's hand up. Elaine, go ahead.
Thank you. And thank you for spending all the time putting these together. I think it's pretty clear when you read through this, just how much is going on. It's a lot. And so this might sound like a fairly small question, but I noticed that advisories were in there as part of the SEL goal. And I think advisories have shown to be very valuable across the district. I thought that there were some sort of structural obstacles to instituting them across all of the buildings. Like, for example, the schedule at the high school just didn't sort of really allow for that. And so I was wondering how we could get advisories across all the buildings and if that means they would look different or or what would be the challenges there?
No, I think you're, I I think the challenges are exactly what you're saying, suggesting right now. But that doesn't mean that that each administrator wouldn't be able to come to terms and find some way of dealing taking the spirit of that and and trying to find some way to include it in their their daily work. So that's, and honestly, we've been looking at this for the last couple of years. This isn't brand new to us right now, so I'm hoping that this is, this will be the year that we can look to codify something.
Okay, so would that be pushed down to administrators, sort of waterfalling to their goals or their?
I don't, I don't know that I would. I don't ever like to see things as top-down, to be honest with you. So I, that's generally not how we operate as a leadership administrative team. But I think that these types of ongoing discussions are something that you hope actually comes the other way up. I mean, you can nurture from the top down, but this work really needs to come from the bottom up. So I think that the the work, though, that has to be done is not necessarily the work at this level at this moment in time. Unless we do put it as a top-down initiative, and I just don't think that would work.
Okay, thank you.
Rich, do you have a question?
I had more of a comment. First of all, I want to thank the Subcommittee here for all the work they've done. I know you guys are both experienced administrators, so it's clear that you've documented this well and worked on the goals. The one question I had was and it's, I guess it's maybe it's more of a comment, like one of the challenges that I've seen, I'm glad to see there's a whole section on communication. Because to me, that's one of the big challenges that both the school committee has and the district. Just communicating more effectively, more strategically with the community. They're just we seem to be going like this a lot. And you know, I, one thing that kind of stuck out with me is that, you know, the superintendent chats are are once per year with each community. You know, that me seems, I'm hoping that that's the floor, right? I'm hoping that perhaps we could try to do this twice with every community. You know, no, it's okay. Just to finish, like one thing I talked about you, Brooke, you know, I've talked to you about this consistently as you know. But, you know, I think at one point you said by the end of the calendar year, you had almost thirty thousand emails that you replied to. And I mean, no CEO in any corporation, right? And that's really what you are. This is like a sixty million dollar operation. No CEO would be responding to thirty thousand emails. And I think part of why you're getting all those emails is we're not being effective at connecting with the community and a little bit has to do with the environment we're in now. So let's put that aside because I think this issue was before. So to me, I think the more FaceTime you can have in the community, even through these Zoom events, you know, would be better. So I I know the answer is going to be, of course, I will try to do it more. But I I thought perhaps, you know, on a performer basis, you may want to comment on that.
Sure. So keep in mind that when we have the those council, the school council meetings too, that that those are open, those are public too. So sometimes you get more than just a school council that's there. If they know that I'm there, very often others will come, come around to to take in those particular meetings too. So I wouldn't want you to think that it's just like you just go out and do this one, one time. With response to the emails, I think that, I think it's just a time period that we've been in the last couple of years. I think that's one of the reasons why it's as many emails. And I I know that both you and Mike have, Mike, of course, I don't want to speak for Mike, of course, so if I'm saying something you don't agree with, Mike, just feel free to to jump in. But I know that you've both kind of alluded to that and said, you know, I wonder if that's why you get so many emails. Really, most of the emails that come my way are specific to specific situations with children, specific parents. It it isn't, it isn't always generalities. Most often, it's specifics. So, you know, and and most often there's simple solutions to fixing those things, not always. But very often, there are simple solutions that we're able to to find. So I don't know that that would help to see a dramatic decrease in the flow of emails, to be honest with you. I know that you both mentioned that. I'm I'm not so sure that I'm in in line with that thinking. I would love to be. I would absolutely love to be, but those are the type of emails that I generally get, to be honest with you. It's not generally like I I can't think of something in general, but like, can you tell me when this is happening or when that's happening? Those are the type of emails that that I I get, you know. And the other thing too, I would say is, I've always appreciated, and I've got a couple of wonderful parents that are out there. And one consistently will send me a little note. I think, I think she's still and will always start off with, hey, super. She's just always got this wonderfully positive note. So I would not want you to think that there are just all kinds of negative emails that come into me. That's not the case. A lot of them, you know, and I know I've said this to Mike too, every, and Todd knows this well, every time we send out a memo, he and I make sure that we clear out our boxes. Because within, within one minute of that memo going out, both of our emails, but mine particularly starts to flood. And people just have comments to make and it's not good, bad or ugly. It's just like, you know, have you thought about this? Or I'm thinking about that or what? You know, it's just, it's just communication. So I'm not so sure that, I mean, is it a lot of work? It's an awful lot of work. But it's, I I've, I know I've said this very often to our leadership team. I never mind the emails because the truth is, parents always have something really good to say. And nine times out of ten, there's something really good that I can take out of those emails. So I I wish it wasn't as many, but it is what it is. And I just, I I I just, the type of emails that I get, I just don't see that changing dramatically through another means of communication.
Other questions for Brooke? Sharon.
This isn't a question as much as it's a comment. But I was, as I was listening to the things that you were talking about with the high school and the work on the climate and the unified staff and the administrative team that is there and in place to support the new principal as he or she steps in. The comment that I wrote down was that NRHS is poised to take off. And I'm, I'm really excited about that. I I can't wait to see what happens as that team gets together and and starts you know, working and making progress towards whatever Neshova is going to be in. And that was really inspiring to me. So I just wanted to to say that was my thought. Neshova is poised to take off and that's really exciting.
I would, I would echo that. And I really, I feel that even this year, having Steve Colony in there was exactly what that school needed this year. It needed the, that sense of calm, that sense of somebody who knows where every bone is in that building, where every scratch is, where every hole is, where, you know, somebody tried and true. And I think that he was just the right person at the right time. But then coupled with that, you have this new, really incredibly vibrant administrative team that's coming in and laying this foundation for whoever the new person is to come in. I would agree with you. I think it's, I think it's poised and and ready to take off. And it is nothing for me to walk through the hallways there and how people say, what a difference, what a difference. And and you say, yes, you know, that's what we want to see. And I've seen such amazing things happen in this year. In this really incredibly bizarre year to navigate, I've seen some amazing things come out of that school. It's, it's really, you're right, it's ready. It's poised to take off.
Thank you. Other questions for Brooke? Okay, Mary, do you want to make a motion?
I do. And and prior to that, if if you'll allow, I I've just been looking at some, some language and I think Amy's suggestion is a very good one. And I, and Brooke and I can work on this, but just to give the committee a sense that it may look something like NRHS teachers. And I added, students and families will be canvassed for information of success and challenge and challenges and reported out to faculty, students and families, our families and students. So we have all those groups in there. And I think that that makes a lot of sense. And so if you would just allow us to wordsmith that and I'll, I'll talk more to Brooke about it. Then I would like to move that the Neshova Regional School Committee approve the Superintendent's Annual Plan twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second.
Who seconded? Joseph was first, who was it? Okay, Joseph, second. Okay, are there any questions? I am not seeing any, so I will call the vote. Elaine?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes, and thank you again to the Personnel Subcommittee.
Since, that's okay. Joseph?
Yes.
Rich?
Yeah.
Brett?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
I vote yes, and I want to thank Mary for her
I vote yes.
Oh, I didn't call on you yet. Wait a minute. I have to talk. I want to say something nice about Mary.
Sorry.
I just want to thank Mary McCarthy for her leadership on the Personnel Subcommittee and and working with Brooke. We both have experience, but I would say that that Mary is the expert and really when it comes to putting things in a way that is concise and makes sense and supports the, 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 Brooke's interests in her professional development. So thank you, Mary, for your hard work and and Brooke, for your thoughtfulness in this approach. So and did I mention I voted yes? Okay, Leah?
Yes.
Okay, it is unanimous. The Superintendent's Goals are approved. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Kathy, for all your hard work and your thoughtfulness. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next item is School Committee Replies to Correspondence. And Rich, you had asked that that be placed on the agenda, so I will let you speak to that.
Yeah, I just, I I I wanted to point out that I I share the same success in that, in the student that wrote in or the former student. And I'm proud that she's my dad went to Air Force Academy, so I think it's quite an accomplishment to get appointed to one of the academies and I think that's great. I do want to just point out one misconception, though. She seemed to grab, get the idea from the Stowe Independent article or the Bolton Independent article that Stowe does not value or the EMT program. Those comments probably came from me and prob, and were mischaracterized in that article. I'm not really sure why, but but that's couldn't be further from the truth. I know nobody that that doesn't value the EMT program. And in fact, the the question was really how the, it it's separate, the education is separate from the operations of how the EMT program works and the response team. And that's really where the question was. And so I just wanted to show there was no misconception about Stowe not valuing that that program and specifically the school committee. Because those are really my comments, speaking as an independent person. And so I certainly want, wouldn't want anybody to think that Stowe or the school committee does, thinks that we don't value that and certainly not me. Thank you.
I thought you wanted to talk about the the protocol we have that the Chair responds to all emails on behalf of the committee that are directed to NR
Forgive me.
dot net. Is that something you wanted to speak to as well?
Yeah, forgive me. I misinterpreted that agenda item. So so I guess my suggestion is that the Chair spends a crazy amount of time. Sydney, please be quiet. Spends a crazy amount of time responding to all these email. Crazy, I mean, she spends an inordinate amount of time. And that's just been the policy that we've had on this committee for, and I think, I, to me, I think it would be, makes more sense if the school committee members in the communities responded to the constituents in the community or School committee members in the communities responded to the constituents in the community or. So, so let's share. Share the workload a little bit more. And I think what we'll find is that. We'll, we'll have a more thoughtful dialogue with the community. And part of my, uh, concern here is just the strategic communications that the district. And the school committee has with the community. It, there is a disconnect. Um, I've heard it for years. Before I got on the committee, I still hear it's the number one thing that we're just not really. For whatever reason, the perception is that we're, we're not responsive to the community. And I think this is one measure that would, um. Uh, you know, create a tighter bond with our constituents. And I just want to be clear, this is not a criticism. Of the Chair explicitly. This is, uh, just a, a different, a change perhaps in how we operate.
Would anyone like to speak to Rich's, uh, comments and points? Leah?
So I think that I agree, and I agree for two reasons. Reason one is that we don't want. Chair burnout. And I think that we've been faced with a couple of issues as of late that. Could lead to that, where we're getting hundreds of emails. So that, it, just from a practical standpoint, that, that does seem significant. And then from a prac, from another practical standpoint, I feel like. We might build more goodwill. If people do feel like the entire committee is responsive. Uh, because there is a general feeling that when Kathy, when Kathy, you respond to. An email from somebody from Stowe, somebody might wonder, why is the Chair responding? Even though that's something we've all agreed to. And it seemed to make sense to me the last time we discussed this. Um, but as time goes on, I think, I know that you respond, but I'm also responding. Um, because I don't want to seem unresponsive. So there are some emails that I still respond to, but I know that some members of the committee would frown upon that. So I think that there's like a bit of a cognitive dissonance on that half of it.
Um, Amy?
Yeah, I, I agree with. The concept of allowing or changing our protocol so that. Um, members of the school committee can respond to. Their constituents or it doesn't even have to be their constituents, just an email that. They choose to respond to, depending on what the issue is. And I've, I've found it to be difficult as a new member. When someone I know writes into the school committee and, and I feel. That, um, there is a little bit of a cognitive dissonance, to use Leah's word. When, you know, a, a protocol prevents me from responding. To a committee address, to an email address to the committee. I just, it didn't seem to make much sense to me as a new member, but I was not involved with. Um, developing the protocol. So. I, I think the only practical issue I see with this is knowing. Making sure that each email is responded to, because once that responsibility is, um. Shared among the committee, then I'm not sure who would, how we would know who has responded to which email or not. Um, and the only thing I've noticed in doing research about, um, public comment, when I looked at other school committees, is that. Some committees had a, I know Rich has suggested this also, but had like a, a form on their website. Um, that allowed you to say whether you wanted a response or not. Um, like you could submit your email and say, I'd like a response. And if you like a response, you could, since we're a regional school district, you could even. Dial it down to by town. But without that, I think this might be hard to implement. Because then we might all assume somebody else is responding to an email.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with, um, everything that's been said. I think that. It's sort of a, um, a seemingly small change, but I think it really needs some fleshing out. Um, like Amy said, how do you keep track of all the emails? Who's going to respond? If you divide it up. Into towns, how do you rotate? Who's going to respond? Like, do you do it by week? Do you do it by area of expertise? Do you allow like the members to say, I'll take this one? Like, I, I, I just think that it needs probably, um, some massaging. Um, and as, um. Leah and Amy were speaking, I was wondering if this is something that. There could be a collaboration between maybe the Communications Subcommittee and the Policy Subcommittee, because it seems like. This idea is sort of wed between those two subcommittees. Um, and I wonder if the larger school committee is amenable to that.
Other comments? I see Brooke's hand. Brooke?
Just a couple of quick thoughts. Um, Amy, when you were doing your homework or your research that you were just talking about. Did you reach out to other school districts? Did you see a commonality with who was responding to the emails? Or did you look at that?
No, it was just something I noticed while I was looking at, um. Their, how other school committees were handling their public comment during Zoom.
Right. Because I, I, I was just kind of curious to know, because for, for the most part, um. And, and I think if memory serves me right, and Kathy, you might correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was. Uh, Chair before you, I think, who established that, if memory serves me correct. And I think in part, I think it was because I think that that was a guidance that was offered by MASC. But I could, I could be wrong. And I, I think in part, it was because it was a single voice and very often. Your Chair understands some contextual information that somebody else might not on the committee. And. Every time you open yourself up to, uh, responding. Then you also basically, um. Put yourself out there. Now, Joe, tell me if I'm wrong or not, but. For discovery. If something happens, then that email, whoever's attached to that email owns that response. And if memory serves me right, that's, I believe, one of the reasons why. And again, you have to check, but I, for years, I think MASC was encouraging that it should always be the Chair. Is my thinking right on that, Joseph?
May I respond now, Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, actually a spot on, Brooke. Um.
I thought.
And you some, you sort of stole it with a thunder that I was going to bring down on the committee here. Because, uh, yes, I can, uh, attest from personal experience from 30 years ago that the MASC. Was, um, uh, of the position that you, when the committee speaks, you speak in one voice. And. 30 years ago, when we didn't have email or what have you, it was always left to the Chair to speak on behalf of the committee. Now, I know that that is not, that, that's not what members, some of the members of this committee want to hear. But I hearken back to the notion that every constituent has a right to seek redress from their personal representatives. So I've always been very clear in my mind, the distinction that if an individual communicates with the committee. The protocol and the practice is, is the Chair will respond. But that never, under any circumstance, precludes constituents from making, from seeking redress or seeking question, or posing questions and seeking answers. From their individual representatives. And I think sometimes that gets lost in, in all of this. So when. Members talk about, you know, the need to, to reach out to their constituency. I think maybe perhaps the message we should be sending is, is that if you send, you know, just harp on this, if you send a, a communication to the committee. You're going to get a response from the Chair. If you want to seek. A response from your own representatives, then it's incumbent upon you to address your own representatives accordingly. So yes, Superintendent Quincy, I would echo wholeheartedly what you just said in regards to MASC practice and the history of this throughout the Commonwealth.
And I think that the history i- is based on, um, legal guidance that MASC receives. And, uh, can, then, then shares out. So I, if memory serves me right, that, that, that's why I had mentioned about just. What's being, uh, discoverable. And, which is also one of the reasons why five years ago, when I came in. Everybody went to like an, an NSD account for the same reason, right? So those are all things that, that you need to really, I, I'm just offering caution. That, that's all I, it, it's irrelevant to me how it's dealt with. But I would offer so, uh, just a quiet note of caution if you're going to start to respond to some of this. Because you are putting yourself out there as well. So I'm, I, I will now, I will now step back.
Um, Sharon?
So, um. My thought, um, actually Brooke had. Commented on, um, on a lot of the things I was thinking. I had talked with Dorothy Presser in the fall when the Communication. Subcommittee was working on, um. What we were working on specifically at that time was, uh, getting this, uh, information from the school committee meetings out more quickly. But, um, I think it, it relates, uh, because she was talking about consistency in messaging. And that different people interpret things in different ways. And so if somebody sent. A communication to us and I responded as a Lancaster representative. And Amy responded as a Bolton representative and Leah responded as a Stowe representative. Are, unless we. The three of us were to communicate with each other first to make sure we were sending the same information, we could be sending mixed messages accidentally. Um, and she was. Urging a lot of caution around that and making sure that, um. Our communications were consistent and our communications, um. There could be no room for interpretation or splitting between, um. Well, this person said this and this person said something else. Or because from different perspectives, different people, uh, interpret things in different ways. Uh, so she was very cautious. She urged a lot of caution about that.
Thank you. Mike?
So a couple of things, um. First of all, I think the spirit of. Rich's suggestion was to sort of alleviate some of the. Workload of the Chair. If I'm not misunderstanding, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Rich. And I'm wondering. First, Kathy, how, how you feel about that? Like, in other words, is that something that you feel is, you know, sort of a daunting task that you would be? Wanting to sort of. Pass off if possible. And then the second thing is, I wonder if we can kind of. Bridge these two positions by, by making some sort of component where. If a, if a resident wants to email, there are, like, they can go to, I don't know, maybe this is making things more complicated, but. You know, if there is a place on the website, you can say, click, I want to email Bolton, Bolton reps, click, I want to email. And the entire committee, click, just the Lancaster reps, just the Chair. You know what I mean? Like, maybe if it's just a one-stop shop kind of thing. It, it, as, as Joe said, it would sort of allow the. Recipients to know who the target audience is. So. Those are two questions of mine.
Thank you. Rich, did you have a comment, a question?
Yeah, I guess my comment is, is this problem's been solved. This runs, corporations do this all the time, specifically software companies. Where somebody emails in with something and it becomes a ticket and it gets assigned to the right person to deal with it. It's very easy to track. We can use a, a spreadsheet just by putting up a Google form. Where it goes into a spreadsheet and then somebody looks at the spreadsheet, perhaps the Chair. And just says, Rich is going to respond to this one, so and so is going to respond to this one. And they have to write a little, you know, next step. So I'm going to confer with. Whoever to respond, or I'm referring this to the head of special education or something. So these are, these are details. It's, but it's not difficult, okay? I guess I don't quite appreciate the, the risk aspect of this. Um, what I see is that. My constituents write in and, you know, as hard as the, the Chair, um, works at this. She's just not going to know the people in Stowe as well as perhaps some of the people in Lancaster. And so I think at the end of the day, as representatives, we're accountable to our constituents, right? And right now there, it's the number one thing. I heard it before I got on the committee, I hear it on the committee now. And to me, one-to-one communication would go a long way. And. I guess the last thing I would say is, um. Lot has happened in the last 30 years, right? So I guess the Chair responding to things. You know, maybe it made sense when there was official communication. I just think as representatives, we just got to make sure. That we're, we're sending the right messages. And I don't see the risk that, you know, that's been identified. Um, it's really that big a deal. It's just really coordination on our part.
Thank you. Elaine?
Um, well, with all due respect, Rich, we're not a software company. We're a public body. We're local government. Um, so I think you could offer that as an option to force people down a certain path, but you can't make anyone do that. I mean, most people get our email address from social media. So they're gonna contact us however they do it. I mean, I get text messages, I get Facebook messages, and sure, I could. Try to funnel everyone into one place, but that's also not very equitable or. Convenient frankly for the constituents. I don't think that they're, I don't think we should force them into any one model. Um. I do think the concerns are real. As someone who's done this, um, it can be overwhelming when dozens and hundreds of emails come in. Um, and I, so, but I think I, I need more fleshing out, like Mike said, um, of what the solutions would be. I do think tracking would be. Of, of who's responding and make sure that it's getting done. Uh, would be a real issue and could create as much work as actually answering the emails, especially, um. When sometimes you can do a lot of cut and pasting in the responses. Um. And, and I shared a lot of the, uh, I would have commented on a lot of the questions that other people have brought up as well. Um, one other thing that I like, might like to see. Codified or more flushed out would be how to respond to people of different. Um, with different opinions, but in sort of the same professional tone and manner. I mean, we're all professional. Um, but it can be very challenging to respond to somebody who has an opposite viewpoint that you do. In the same way that you respond to somebody that you agree with. Um, and from a government perspective, I think that, that is one thing that I think is really important and might get lost with lots of different people responding. So. Again, it's not that I'm opposed to it, I'd just like to see more of the solutions kind of worked out. So I guess perhaps I agree with Mike by saying, maybe we should send this to Subcommittee. Um, and see what we could work out there.
Leah?
I think actually a good example of this is the person who gave our public, our first public comment today. Because I know that the committee responded to her, but because her comment was kind of. Pointing towards Stowe, I responded to her. And I responded to her by, by saying exactly what Rich just said a couple of minutes ago. That, you know, I clarified for her that we absolutely love that program, et cetera. And so. There are times where the Chair's response, in my opinion, is not enough. And so. Um, trying to figure out how we strike that balance, because I totally respect what Brooke is saying 100%. Um, but I also think that there needs to be some shift to our protocol so that. You know, the Chair's more sterile response by necessity can be buttressed by a more personalized response from, say, their neighbor. And I have no answers to that. I'm just throwing it out there.
Thank you. Um, if, it, oh, Joseph?
No, I'm just gonna make a, I'm, I'm sorry, my chair, I'm just gonna make a quick comment. I, I'm, I guess I'm at a bit of a loss as to how it is that our protocol prevents what. Uh, my colleague from Stowe has just stated. Again, maybe it's just a sort of an unwritten knowing of, of this particular protocol, is that. Nobody is precluded from seeking redress, uh, seeking answers from their own. Representatives. And, and maybe it's just a question of messaging on our part, maybe we're just not getting that message out. But again, if we're going to do anything in this, in this regard. I would still echo the Superintendent's, uh, comments along with Ms. Presser's comments that she made through Ms. Park. That if you start creating mixed messaging. You are essentially creating a potential problem from a litigation standpoint. And I will, I will just leave you with this and I will say nothing further on this. As a young attorney, I hearken back to a time when I talked to an attorney better than me, a lot smarter and better attorney than me. He was walking out the door and I was handing him a motion to go argue in Superior Court. And I said to him, look. It's pure loser. And his response was, I don't need to win the motion, I just need to muddy the waters. And I think mis-messaging muddies the waters from a litigation standpoint. So I think we have to be very cautious about this.
Thank you. Mary?
So, it, it, great conversation, because I think too that, that even the Personnel Subcommittee in terms of the handbook. This might be something for us to look at too. But. The, uh, as Elaine said, we are a public body and. But the, as Elaine said, we are a public body and Sharon was talking about the caution. And when we think about the training that we all go through to be able to speak as a school committee, well, that one voice is really, really important. And there could be litigation. Also, women are accused of not answering emails. And when we think of how many have come through, it's, it's really tough to, to figure out how that could possibly be. Since most emails come to all of us and we see what Kathy has responded or if Elaine is the respondent and she got to, she got her share of a lot of them. And then oftentimes, we will respond to, and I responded to Krista, our first person, because I just wanted to just thank her and also say that in 1987, I was on the School Committee that voted for the first time in the showbook for the EMT program. And that's one, you know, I take great pride in that, as I do great pride in Krista's accomplishments. So I, in fact, would think that if it were that we would answer any emails that we probably should copy to the Chair. That's, so that's the other side. There are safeguards involved here. Back in 1987, and I know we're talking ancient history, but constituents in Bolton called me on the phone all the time, called me on the phone. And so I didn't, but it was a conversation that we had. It wasn't something in writing that becomes legal and we have to stand by. And who knows whether I said the right things. I hope I did. I did a lot more listening than talking. But it's a different world today. And I think it was Elaine saying about the different ways that, that our communities can communicate with us. So maybe there are some ways that we could make it easier for people to communicate with us, but it's really important that the Chair has a sense of what is going on. Because just think of some of the controversies that we have had, that we have gone through. And it's like telephone, you know, how that some of the messages get messed up? And none of us need that. We need things to operate as smoothly as possible in communication with our communities. So I think this is a larger issue and the Subcommittee's really should kind of take a look at this and maybe come up with a unified plan.
Thank you, Mary. Steve?
I, I think that one of the things we have to make sure of is that when, when there is an email or a question even to an individual member of the committee, we have to respond saying that we are not speaking for the committee. We are speaking for ourselves as perhaps your representative on the committee and the old protocol of the Chair speaking for the committee. I, I don't think we, we need to fiddle with that concept at all. We don't want the person who's, who's making the request to think that we are speaking for the committee and then to hold the committee to what the individual person is saying. The only time that I have ever responded to, to an email is when it was, let's say, of particular interest to me. And the first thing I did was ask the Chairman if I could respond. Now, if the Chairman said I could respond, then in reality, she understood and I understood that in effect I was speaking for the committee. However, under normal circumstances, a response to a constituent, which I feel is very valuable and certainly increases the communication back and forth between the elected official and the constituent. In the beginning, in the beginning of your response, you really need to make sure that you are, you are clearly stating that you are speaking for yourself and not conveying the feelings, decisions, whatever it is of the School Committee as a whole.
Thank you, Steve. Amy, is your hand, Amy?
Yes, thank you. The other thing that I, I wanted to use as an example is, every once in a while, there is an email that, you know, as a committee member, I wonder whether or not there has been a response. And this is one thing where if it's an email from one of, you know, a constituent within Bolton that goes to the committee, I just, it has been an area of confusion for me whether or not I know whether the Chairperson has responded or not, or if I'm, if, if I know that the Chairperson hasn't responded through, no fault of the Chairperson other than hundreds of emails have come in, you know. I just think I'm such a rule follower that I have a problem with if we have a protocol that requires the Chairperson to respond and I have any doubt as to whether that person has received a response, I want to make sure that everybody who emails the committee is receiving a response. So for me, this has been an area of confusion, I guess is the best way to put it, you know? Because then if I respond to the constituent that I think hasn't received a response, I'm going against a protocol that we've all agreed to. I don't know if I've confused issues more, but that is, I've noticed is happening.
Thank you. Rich?
Yeah, I guess my last comment is, is these are all details for the most part. I mean, for the people that say you don't need to, you know, you know, I would trust the other members on the committee that they would tell a member that they don't, they'd tell a constituent they don't speak for the committee, or at least would be implied unless they were saying, I speak for the committee. But if you need to actually say that, definitely say that. And just like when you email a teacher, you know, say, I've got my parent hat on, not the school committee hat, that kind of thing. So to me, this is pretty elementary. And I trust the other people on the committee to respond to their constituents responsibly. And, you know, I guess the way I point to is, I just think the status quo is broken and we should try something new. There's lots of reasons to, to just continue doing things and I don't think the results are showing that it's effective. So I'll leave it there from, from my perspective.
Thank you. If there are no more comments, I would like to respond to some of the things that have been said, give my perspective. And again, I appreciate the conversation. I especially appreciate the concern for my time. And not gonna lie, a couple of times I was caught off guard. And sometimes I send out a notice to you guys and I stop by saying, I'm not complaining, I'm just explaining. But let me give some perspective from my, my point of view. First of all, this is a protocol that predates me as the Chair. I've been on the committee. This is my sixth year. And it has always been there. However, in the six years I have been on, I have never experienced the deluge of emails that I have directed to NRSC.net. So that's unusual. And then, oh, Jeepers Siri, who invited you to this party? I mean, okay, I gotta turn Siri off. I don't know what triggered her temper mental. Okay, so there's that. I think that there is, I think there's value in having an official voice. And I think it was Leah last year that asked that responding on behalf of the committee be added somewhere, which I have. But I don't think that precludes anybody from responding to an email, especially to a constituent, and adding whatever you need to add. I think that the personal touch, and this goes to what Brooke was saying in the, all the emails that she responds to. A CEO is concerned about the bottom line and how much money a CEO is going to make. When you're in education, you're concerned about people and children and you know that parents reach out to you with questions and concerns because of their love for their children and they want to know that we care as much about their children. Well, in the ballpark, you can never care about somebody else's child as much as you should your own, but that that care is there. And that requires the personal touch. And there are many times when I respond to emails as the Chair and I circle back and I'll send something out to somebody as an individual because of something they say or give them my cellphone and say, you know, if you want to talk about this, please call me. So there's the official role and then there's the personal role. And, and I think that there are times when we have to be cautious, but I never want us to be afraid. Because if we err on the side of caring and consideration and someone's going to pick us apart for that, well, that, that's on them. It's not on us. So I think that the more that communication people receive, the more people feel the personal outreach from us, the better we are. And it's, it's not about numbers. I mean, if it makes somebody feel heard or feel, feel better or less confused about something that we're doing, then from my point of view, it's worth the time. I think that Mary raised the issue of going back into the handbook and looking at our protocols for communication. That's definitely an option. There are no policies around communication. There are advisories from MASC as Brooke and a couple of other folks mentioned. So let me just make sure. I wrote down a lot of stuff. I just have to make sure I want to, oh, the other thing, the towns have, and I get emails from, that come through the town's website and it comes across as notification. And so maybe that's something to see if there's, if that's something folks can do through our website, I don't know. But I think the culture is just being able to reach out to somebody directly. If there are other ways to accommodate people, I think we should look into those. Let me see. Sorry. Sorry, talk about that. With regard to CCing the Chair, I know that, that, that there have been a couple of individuals who said, I don't want her to know what I'm saying to you. That's fine. Whatever is within people's comfort level is fine, as long as they're reaching out to you. And if you think there's something that the committee as a whole or I as a Chair need to be aware of, I, I trust that, that people will, will raise that. The thing I started doing to your point, Amy, there are some emails, especially we get a lot, there are some that I star and I circle back to because I really need to think differently about them. What I've started doing, especially in light of a concern that was raised, that they came to me and I was screening them and people weren't being responded to, is what I've started doing is, if I don't have a response right away, is just saying I'm acknowledging receipt of your email. And either I say something there or I circle back to it. I, I think that in the last, I know there was one time I asked Mike Horace to respond to somebody for me because I was just, I, I just didn't, I couldn't get my head around a good response. And I do recall in the last, I don't know, month or two, one that I had started and I didn't get back to. But then I did. So, yeah. I think the more communication, the better if we want to look at our protocol. I don't want to make it more complicated than it is. It's not a big, well, in hindsight, it's, it's not a big deal to respond as the Chair on behalf of the committee. But as was mentioned, that doesn't mean that you can't say, I know that the Chair responded or I know that the Chair will respond, but I just want to respond or, or, or reach out or whatever you need to say. What I don't want to have happen is, I would be worried about trying to set up a system where you assign people what to do, because someone's going to fall through the cracks and that's the last thing that we want. So let me make sure I got everybody. Let me see. So, yeah, so I, I mean, it, it sounds like if we want, I mean, obviously, communication, the, the list of things for Communication Subcommittee is, seems to be growing every week. But it could be brought up for communication, bring something together. But I think our goal is to make sure that people are heard, that they're responded to and that constituents feel that they can reach out to you or that you will just take it upon yourself to reach out with, to them. And really, you're responding to their concern. If something happens and, and we're at odds, you know, deal with it. So that's pretty much my take. I don't know if anybody has any more comments. We can certainly bring it back. When we, Mary has asked everybody to look at the, the School Committee manual and give us feedback. This might be something that you want to focus on. And we can leave communication out of it for a while because I know that they have a lot on their plate. So, so, yeah. Any other thoughts, Rich?
Do we need to formally refer to one of the Subcommittee's?
No, Mary.
I heard, I heard from, I heard from Mike that he thought that the, the Communication Subcommittee and the Policy Subcommittee could jointly take it up, or one of them could decide it, so.
No, it's not a policy, a protocol. And, and I, Mike, Mike certainly is the Chair of the Communication Subcommittee. If you want to take that, on that's fine, but if we want to, Mary had said that last time because now that we've finished the Superintendent's goals, our focus will be on editing, updating the manual. And this could be something that folks give us their input on. And then when we come to get the, the manual approved again, this could be a topic for discussion. So Mike, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we've got some things that we're busy with right now, but I don't see why we couldn't bring it up as an agenda item in the next or, you know, the subsequent meeting. I think that would be, I think that'd be fine.
But, but for the time being, I'm happy to respond as the Chair, but, but feel free. There's nothing, as Joe said, to keep you from saying, oh, I know this person or Jeepers, this is one of my constituents, let me weigh in or just offer whatever. Certainly within your purview to do that. And again, I mean, it's, it's the nuances of the protocol, but I don't think anybody would disagree with the fact that we're on this, this committee to serve the children of these three towns. And we serve children by listening to and attempting to address the questions and concerns of their families. And as long as that's the framework of our communication, I think that that's something that people can understand. And if you feel that I haven't addressed or the Chair has not addressed something adequately, then it's certainly within your purview to, to bring that up. So, so it sounds like it stands. Mary, yes?
I just, I would just like to, to, to thank you, Kathy, for responding. And I think perhaps some of those emails that you might not have immediately been able to respond to were, were emails that are very difficult to receive because we certainly don't want to respond in kind to a tax ad hominem. And by that, that's the Latin for attacks on, on a person. So some of us have been applauded at times and others have been vilified. And, and while I'm really happy that Kathy will take on some of those rather than my responding. And I read Mark Brackett's book, so I, I think about how I feel and what's behind it and I name it, but nobody wants to hear that. So Kathy, thank you very much for, for all of them that you do because you, you respond with grace and with the history of what you know. And if we can all find a better way to be able to, in addition to what Kathy's doing, what the Chair does, to be able to communicate, let's do that. In addition to what Kathy's doing, what the chair does, to be able to communicate, let's do that communications. We have, our next meeting is until February 24th, I think it is. So there's plenty of time. And so be happy to hear from communications, uh, anybody else on the committee and that's that.
So I think it sounds like the two-pronged approach will be for the communication subcommittee. To have a discussion and bring something forward to the committee and then, um. Seeing how we, what changes folks are interested in making with regard to communication in the school committee manual. I think everybody has a hard copy of the school committee manual. It is also on our website. So if everyone is cool with that, um, Mary and I will do our work. Communication will, will do some work on this and bring it back to the c- committee at a future meeting. If that is cool with everybody and I could get a thumbs up, that would be awesome. Mary is your thumb up. Brett is your thumb up. It is, okay. All right. Rich, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I guess I just, the one concern that I heard consistent is just that I'd love that the communication committee could just circle back on the actual. Legal risk of replying because what, because I, I'm hearing two different things. It's, we should respond as one voice, but it's okay if we respond ourselves. So, you know, I, I don't really, I guess that's what I want to understand is if there really is the risk. Of us responding directly to our constituents, that seems to be a huge problem. And, uh, you know, I guess I'd like the communications committee to sort that out. So I'd just leave.
Thank you. Okay. Um, if there are no objections, oh, Brooke, yes. Brooke, you're muted.
I see that Anne Marie has joined us and she's probably in, in and out for this meeting. So I, if we can hear from her and let her, uh, carry on her Mary way, I would really appreciate that, so.
Welcome in, Marie. Good to see you.
Thank you. Good to see you all too. Thank you, Brooke. I'm here to give you another update on the principal search committee for our high school. I last updated you two weeks ago on January 13th. At that time, our NASDAQ search consultant was convening a search committee. Um, with the, with the, um, charge of evaluating the people who had applied for the job. Relative to the candidate profile that they had, that NASDAQ had developed, um, using the results of our, um, of our online survey. And what they gleaned from the focus groups and what people thought that they would like to see in our new principal. So the search committee met facilitated by our NASDAQ consultant and use that candidate profile. Um, to, to identify candidates that they would like to interview. The interviews are underway this week. Um, we interviewed some Monday, some today, and we will be finishing up tomorrow. Then the committee will identify finalists, at which time their names will be made public. And we'll announce details of the opportunity for all the faculty, staff, uh, parents and students. Who virtually meet each finalist, ask questions of them. And to provide input on what they believe are each candidate's strengths and challenges. Their input then will be forwarded to Brooke and the superintendent will consider that input as she conducts her interviews of the finalists. Process is running smack on target for, for the timeline. So we still envision, um, having a new high school principal announced by the end of February. And that's where we stand.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anne Marie. Appreciate it.
Any questions for Anne Marie? Elaine?
Thanks, Anne Marie. Um, could you tell us who is on the search committee and maybe if not their names, like what types of positions these people hold?
So I can tell you that we have, um, we have some building and district administrators. Uh, we have, uh, um, faculty from the school department heads, um, a unit C support person. Um, students and parents from each of the member communities. There are 15. It's a large group. There's 15 of us.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for Marie?
Can I just say one more thing?
Yes.
The students have been just so completely awesome. You know, they're, they're articulate. You know, each of them, when we asking the questions, you know, they've each got a question that they ask. Um, they're so poised. Um, you know, we have our discussions about the candidates. They, uh, they feel quite free to give their opinions, even when it's perhaps a differing opinion. It's just been such a wonderful experience to watch them in action. I, I think, I think we're doing good with our high school students. If these, uh, if these are representative of the group.
Thank you.
That sounds great, Anne Marie. I wonder, are you able to tell us how many candidates are in the pool at this moment? And feel free to say no, it's okay.
You know, we have held every single thing about this election process totally close to the vest. We haven't told anybody who the applicants are. Uh, we, we've not said if, even if asked if a particular person has applied. Uh, we haven't said how many, um, and the reason for that is because at this stage of the process. Candidates have expressed to the NASDAQ person that they like to keep their candidacy confidential. Both to protect the position that they've got now and because it's, it's just what's done. Also, um, it's, I think, important to our reputation, our district's reputation, that we. Be seen as a district that runs a clean, clean, clean process. I think that's one of the reasons why we get good numbers. Of people applying for our positions, Leah, because they know that, that, you know, they're not going to be outed for their current, uh, you know. Their current position as being a candidate. And I always worry when I say things like that. Um, that it will somehow lead to, uh, some identification, you know, process, um. How badly do you want to, I can say a number. If, if it's, Brooke isn't right with you, if I say a number, how many we interviewed or?
I think I'm more interested in knowing if you're comfortable with the number.
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely. Yeah. We had a very good number of applicants and we're doing a very good number, an exhausting number actually of interviews.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, without objection, thank you, Anne Marie.
Thanks, Anne Marie. Thank you. I, I'm going to say good night, if I could. Thank you.
Um, move to the business manager report.
Pat, you're muted.
Pat, yeah, thank you.
I got it. Thank you. Alita, can you pull it up? The November and December results of operation? I'm going to speak very briefly about November because it seems like it was so long ago. But there are some notations on the bottom that have changed in, as of December and have even changed again now in, into January. Um, so, um, one of the things that the budget and warrant subcommittee had asked me to do was to. Highlight some areas that, um, that should be brought forward. In system wide, um, that, that transportation is in that grouping. Um, transportation i- is a, um, driver for the, um, balance in that account right now. Because of the unknown cost of transportation when we go into the hybrid at the high school. Substitute, long-term substitute is up in comparison to other years for multiples of reasons. There's because of COVID and also because, um, of, um. Paternity leaves, leaves of absence for other reasons. Um, technology, there's an increase there due to COVID. Um, and at that point in November, we were concerned about not being able to cover the expenditures. Beyond December 30th. Salaries and remote learning academy expenditures are, um, they're sprinkled among. Um, a couple of the different schools, um, depending on, you know, whether or not a teacher was in a particular school and decided to teach. The remote learning or whatever. We kept them in the same place only so that we could track them easier. And then the additional personnel that we brought on, um, we placed them in different places depending on who was actually doing the hiring. So, um, and that was under the restraint of only 60% of their salaries could, could be covered at that time. So does anybody have any questions about November or, because I can just move on to December because it's more recent. And it looks somewhat similar.
I don't see any questions, Pat.
Okay, move to the next one. So the results of operation for December, again, um, if you look at the bottom, I did the same thing again for this month. Only, um. What, right now, we're in a, a position where we're only one month out from developing what those costs are going to be for transportation. Um, and for substitutes, it's the long-term substitute. They're, they're kind of holding steady. There wasn't a significant change in that one month. But it is an ever-changing account. It could get, um, worse. Um, and I'm, I'm watching that one very closely. Technology increases, um, due to COVID expenses. That's another, still another highlighted item. And we're expecting changes in the grant funding. They've now, um. Decided to extend the period of time that that grant can cover, which really takes a lot of burden off of our budget. Not as much as I would like, um, but it does help us. Um, it's now moved to the end of June, so we can spread like, um, especially in technology. We can spread some of those costs for the additional bandwidth out over till the end of the school year. And also, um, for the remote learning teachers. We've, we had to add a couple of more, um, based on enrollment and, um, this is definitely going to help us. And we are also, um. Expecting some additional grant funding and that's to come along in, in, in the near future. And there's also been some, um, changes in FEMA. Um, the, the FEMA funding. In the past, we've only, we would only receive 75%. Of, um, the funding reimbursement, uh, of. Funding reimbursement for items that qualified under the FEMA program. And that was the kind of why, on certain things, a lot of them are related to building. And, and certain things not, but not P P E at that point. So I sort of le- left that as the last resort for funding because I wanted to get the most bang for my buck. But now they've changed that and it's going to be 100% and they're going to cover P P E. And some of the costs related to vaccination and medical related costs, which is a huge. Huge help for, um, for us for this fiscal year. So does anybody have any questions about anything?
Amy, Steve, and then Leah.
Okay.
Thank you. My question is regarding transportation costs. So, um, I'm assuming that's related to percentage of kids, uh, students who are electing the hybrid model. That's our in-person option at the hybrid model at the high school.
Well, it's too bold because it's almost like bringing back the kindergarten run. You know, well, this year we don't have the kindergarten run anymore. That used to be part of our transportation budget. But now because of the time of day that they're released, it's different. We have to put in another run of buses. So we're, we're working that out right now with the transportation company and we're trying to see. You know, just how many kids want to ride the bus first? I mean, there, there are a lot of kids that drive to school and, you know, uh, their parents just don't want them to get on a bus. E- even at the high school level. So we'll see with that. There's a survey that's out there and we're just, we, we're expecting. To get some final numbers from that and then it takes a while to work through all these routes. With the bus company because it's transported, the kids are transported district-wide. And we need to make sure that we do it efficiently and according to the guidelines put, you know, forth by the state.
Absolutely. Do you know what the preliminary survey numbers were?
No, I do not. Um, I don't think, I don't think they're out yet. Are they, Brooke? Don't they have until next week or something? Okay. Then who was next?
Steve?
Yes, I noticed between Nov- the end of November and the end of December, we draw, um. Budget versus actual, we dropped over $300,000. Um, is that primarily expense? That has been taken up now by COVID issues?
That, I, I would say is probably related, um, mostly to, um. The additional staff that we had to bring on for the remote learning. But in January, you're going to see this change significantly because I have to amend the grant now. And I have to switch everything around to make sure that I have everybody in the right place.
The other thing that just came out today is too, Steve, but I, I don't, it's too soon for us to put it out here tonight because it just came out this afternoon. Is S R two. I don't even know if you've gotten any, yeah, see, Pat hasn't even received.
I don't even have any, I saw that it's out and there was, I could see people commenting on it in the listserv. But I, I haven't seen any numbers.
No, because we, nothing formal has come through, but we were told that today through, um, the, the commissioners meeting. So, yeah, and that's not the only fund there, there, and again, Todd may, correct me if I'm wrong. That wasn't the only fund that they talked about today either, the S R two. There were, there were one or two other funds. That are also going, going to be running parallel. Um, and if memory serves me right, Todd, I, I think the superintendent's asked of the commissioner. Could create a one cheater that basically shows the different, because there's different funds now, Steve, that like just now, like honestly. It's too soon to put it out there, but some of that is just starting to flow through now. Todd, would you say that's a correct way to capture it? What happened this afternoon? Okay.
What is an S R two?
Uh, maybe Todd, you want to talk about S R one? We have S R one and then this is like a stimulus money. Now this is S R two that's coming through. Todd, do you want to speak to that?
Federal stimulus money that was available to us, um, for this year. And so the S R two money will come with the new stim, federal stimulus package. And then we will then be able to, you know, determine and be, uh, to know what we were eligible for in the S R two funding that comes. Forward with this next stimulus package. But as you can imagine, there's still a lot of pending information, um, until it comes out. But we're told that there is an S R two coming.
And that was just today.
Yep.
Yeah, just today.
Thank you. Leah?
So just, um, to follow up on something that Amy was asking and then I'll ask my other question. Pat, for the high school run, you're adding that middle of the day, take the kids home. On the four days that they're there. But are there some kids who are staying all day where we need bus routes at the end as well?
Well, we're working on that right now. We don't know if anything's going to change in, in regards to that. Um, Michelle and I were having a conversation about that actually yesterday afternoon. And she was, um, talking to the bus company and then because, you know, they watch our school committee meetings. They want to know what's going on too. And, you know, they're trying to plan. It takes them a while. They may need to get some new bus drivers.
So actually, that, that was one of the things that came out today in the commissioners, uh, meeting. And that's one of the things when we're talking about, we're not sure how smooth the full return is going to be. A big concern right now statewide is not having enough bus drivers. And that's not, just not something that we're going to be able, like Michelle was going to be able to glom onto right away and make sure it works. And this is going to, they're, they're forecasting that this is going to be a very big issue statewide.
Um, so then my other concern is more broad and that is, Pat, ta- tell me if I'm just totally wrong in what I'm remembering. It feels like your balance sheets, the numbers are way bigger than I ever remember them being. Is that because you're just finding things harder to predict? Things are much?
Well, as the school year goes on, uh, you have to estimate, you know, that if somebody budgeted for a certain amount of money. And they intend to spend that money, um, you, you, I assume that they're going to spend it. Until something else comes to light. Um, if something comes through as being more expensive or maybe less expensive. So you'll see some fluctuations at that point. And then there's always, um, as Brooke has always mentioned, that we freeze the budget at some point. Because it, it doesn't make sense to have, you know, spending continue beyond a different, a certain point anyway. Because the bills don't come through and we want to clean up at year end anyway.
So you don't feel like?
See us do a freeze here shortly. Uh, we have done that every year. It has worked very well. And so that's when we're able to capture if somebody has decided they're not going to do this or we, we've said. We're stopping our spending right now. So it, it has served us well in the last couple of years. So we have every intention of doing it this year. But to your, your point, Leah, i- i- you're right, like the swings have never been this big. You're absolutely right and it's all COVID related.
Okay.
Thank you. Everybody all set? Okay, thank you. Um, subcommittee reports, budget and warrant report, Steve?
You just had it.
Thank you. Glad you're doing business with you. Policy report, Leah?
So we meet before the next school committee meeting, so we have nothing new to update you on.
Thank you. Moving right along, communication?
Well, I'm sorry, we actually have an update. So communications subcommittee met, we are kind of in the final stages of establishing a an offering a workshop with Chris Heran. The last time we met, we hashed out a couple of themes that we felt that the workshop could center around. And I would say that the committee can expect a doodle, which would kind of establish when a common date is, and then we'll pass it on to Chris and then we will have that kind of workshop made available if you choose to attend. The other topic that we were charged with was to hash out some of the protocols for our, our, our budget. What do we call that?
It's the public hearing.
Right, budget public hearing. And I think the consensus in the subcommittee was that we would actually like to invite you to our next subcommittee so that you can help.
Sorry, I'm busy that day.
Okay, very good.
No, let me know. I'll be there. You know that.
All right. So again, I just noticed before the meeting that Chris had written me back. I haven't had a chance to really dive into that. But once I do, I would say within the next several days, you can expect an email from me asking you to provide some dates that might work, whether it's before a subcommittee or rather before a school committee meeting or on an off week, whatever it might be.
Okay. Thanks a lot, Mike. That's exciting about the workshop with Chris Heran.
Of course, it's exciting.
Hope to like him. He's a cool. Thank you. Building committee, Mr. Gleason?
I give madam chair, the building committee, the initial regional high school building committee met on February, excuse me, January 20th. And we had a speaker at our meeting, Dr. Jake Foster. He spoke on the core program process overview for the high school build project along with assistant principal, Jeanne Belay. And it was a very it was an interesting overview and I think a lot of the members are getting up to speed on what it is that we're doing on the committee. The superintendent has reinforced the fact that a lot of what's going on with the build project is being handled at the administrative level at this point. So we're sort of in that as to coin Principal Conan's expression, crawl, walk, run. We're still in that crawling stage. So my next meeting is scheduled for the 17th and at which time I think we'll have something a little more substantive to report at that time.
Thank you. Dear Jay, Elaine?
Our first meeting is tomorrow night, so I'll have more of an update at the next meeting.
Super. Thank you so much. Okay, items to be considered for next and or future agendas. So I have the planning calendar up. I have on my list negotiations, an update about the high school transition to hybrid. I see you have budget update on that anywhere, anyway. I would ask that we did have tentatively scheduled AMT program presentation. I would like to request that we move that to either the second meeting in February or the first meeting in March, if there are no objections. Okay. The other things that are there are the college report card. Are we going to get that, Brooke?
Yeah, that's a great question. I don't have an answer for you on that, but I'll look into it.
Program of studies review?
Yeah, I'll look into that as well.
When, when we have those presentations, it's helpful if we could have, I call them executive summaries.
Yeah.
A one-pager on any substantive changes to the program of study. And that can be things added, things deleted, or any changes.
Right. And that's how we've done it the last couple of years and it's worked very well.
Okay, the WCSA scholar? Is that happening?
Yeah, um, yes, it is. I'm not sure, and I don't know if Alita has the date. I'm not sure the date for that. Do you know offhand, Alita?
As long as it comes forward, that's great. Alita, do you have?
We bring it forward right after we have that, the announcement.
And then the MSBA update with Jake Foster, do you want to schedule that for them as well?
I would really like to. I'd like to, I would like the school committee to know some of the background work that's happening right now. Again, that's only one component of it, but I think it would be great to hear the work.
Okay. Any other topics, Leah?
If appropriate, the principal search update. At that point, we should know finalists, I would think. I don't know if there's anything we would need to discuss, but.
I would have brought that up with my superintendent's report anyway, just as another, you know, a layer and the next layer to it, so.
Okay, great.
And Mike?
That's what I was going to request, so thank you.
All right. So those are the, we've been getting the mascot update because things are chugging along there too. And then the principal update, COVID issues, budget update. So, okay, I think that is pretty much it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Sorry. With the full, with the return to hybrid at the high school, would that, would you be able to inform us of percentages from the surveys?
We should know by then.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Okay, are we ready to entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting and entertain into, entertain, enter into executive session if so? Elaine?
Sure. I move to go into executive session at 8:34 PM pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A7 to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. Review of executive session minutes of, oh boy, 61720 Session A, 61720 Session B, 7120 Session A, 7120 Session B, 9220, 91620, 92320, 102120, 102620, 11420, 12220, 12920 Session A, 12920 Session B. And 11321, in accordance with open meeting law, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 22FG, committee will adjourn an executive session.
Second?
Second.
Okay, here's the vote. Kathy, yes, Amy? Okay, so the thumbs up, Brett?
Yes.
Rich? Joseph?
Yeah. Yes, Rich says yes.
I thought I heard a whisper yes, but okay, that counts too. Mike Horash?
Yes.
Mary, I didn't hear you.
Oh, I didn't hear you. Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Okay. Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
And Leah?
Yes.
Okay. So who's going to leave? I will bid you a bonjour.